My name is Beth Minett. I'm Executive Director of our Institute for People and Technology, and I'm thrilled to see so many people here for our new year kickoff town hall. We want to use today as a way of catching some folks up who are new to Georgia Tech about what iPad is all about. But in particular, the meat of the day will be spent in a number of breakout sessions to give you information about new activities, new research programs, new infrastructure, opportunities for students, and more. So what I want to do in the short amount of time we have here in the plenary session is for folks who are truly new to Georgia Tech to give you a sampling of how we describe iPad, our mission and our vision. I'm really mic'd loud, Sean. Take it down a little. And to give you some highlights. For those of you who've heard me give the big vision speech before, I've put the highlights and the new opportunities interspersed throughout the talk, so you're going to have to hang in there with me to catch the new stuff. And then at the close, I'm going to give you an overview of the breakout groups and what we're going to be doing for the rest of the afternoon. So we're about just at two and a half years into this experiment of this new organization at Georgia Tech. And this is one of the slides that has stuck with us through the entire time, which is that iPad itself and then the overall Georgia Tech strategy is to increase our leadership around major societal challenges and problems, and in particular, do that around different industrial sectors. So our purpose is to address complex societal challenges in areas such as healthcare, education, media, and humanitarian systems, in a particular to create a community, to create an ecosystem that requires multidisciplinary collaboration and thought leadership and coordination. From an industry perspective, and with that, I don't mean just for-profit industry, but all of the industry stakeholders that work in these areas, we want to align their interests with Georgia Tech's interest and agenda and to meet the needs and the challenges that they are facing as they also attempt to show leadership and to make progress in these areas. So that is about creating opportunities for joint thought leadership. It's about creating opportunities for research engagement here at Georgia Tech, of course, as well as recruiting our fantastic students, for networking and connecting to other industry players, as well as product development. And then finally, for our Georgia Tech academic, applied faculty, general faculty, and students, it's about providing tremendous resources to you to increase our ability to do transformative and translational research. Now during that two and a half year agenda, we've also been able to evolve alongside Georgia Tech's overall strategy for what is now called interdisciplinary research institutes or IRIs. So my boss right now, Steve Cross, is having a really rough time on our campus in Metz, France. Aw. But if he was here, these are the slides that he would show, that the overall structure of IRIs is to support and connect faculty and students doing basic and applied research across the entire Georgia Tech campus. We want to blur the lines between academic disciplines. We want to create collaboration and interdisciplinary teaming. And in the sense that we have a formula, it's about looking at government, societal, industrial needs, connecting them through IRIs, and by doing so, connect to the academic colleges, to other partnering organizations, to GTRI, to the many, many research centers and operations and laboratories that we have here, to pull together the right interdisciplinary team to address the problems that we collectively face. And so during that two and a half years, there's been a combined evolution of the IRIs that make up the Georgia Tech landscape. Some of these have been with us the entire time. Some of these, such as IBB, were grandfathered into this. Some of these are very new. The robotics and intelligent machines IRI was recently announced, and some of these are in formation. But this is the landscape in which we are trying to operate, and then for the rest of the day, I'm going to take it back down to, well, what are we trying to accomplish within our IRI, the Institute for People and Technology? So we've taken Steve's formula. We've taken our overall stakeholder strategy and have boiled it down into what we call our three T approach. And it's worked for us thus far, and I'm using this as a way to structure both an overview of what we're doing, our breakout groups, as well as our recent activities. So the three Ts is to support transdisciplinary research, to support translational approach, and to pull all that together to create transformational leadership. So in transdisciplinary research, what that means again is that if we're trying to tackle crazy, challenging problems and things such as healthcare and education, humanitarian systems, and media, that we need multidisciplinary, interdisciplinary, transdisciplinary teaming. And so, very proud today. I won't do the name-calling, but I know that both in this room and the faculty that we work with, that we pull across an amazing network of faculty and talent here at the Georgia Tech campus. We tried many different ways to stimulate these multidisciplinary conversations, to stimulate partnership, to stimulate new projects, and we'll give you some examples of that. We love to provide resources to seed innovative research approaches. And then, again, we try to pull all of this together to what we describe as a systems approach for maximizing opportunities for leadership and impact. And what I mean by a systems approach is it isn't just enough to pull together a collective group of expertise, or it's not just enough to support amazing research, but how do you pull those pieces together so that you can have significant impact on society at large? So I'll give you some examples of that. In the past two and a half years, again, we're thrilled to be pulling faculty from the academic colleges to connect with GTRI, to connect with many, many organizations across the campus. And one of the things that we do, and we'll talk about further, is how our own campus is a living laboratory. So we work with everything from OIT to housing, to transportation, to even with the Student Health Center, as well as providing new ways of us to think about education and media and health and humanitarian systems. One of the things that's new this year is we have created an internal campus advisory ward. We are able, we've met once, we will continue to meet quarterly, and these are associate deans of research, school chairs, laboratory directors, and other representatives on campus that help keep us aligned with the priorities of those organizations and with the opportunity, again, providing great opportunities for faculty and for students. When I mean, when I talk about a systems approach, I always like to use this diagram. One of the ways I describe this is, and this is a diagram that summarizes a good bit of the research that we do in healthcare. In the old days, I've been here 15 years, and this is my second tour of duty, so it's about 22 years of Georgia Tech experience at this point in time, if you count my student days. We were really good at people coming to campus, and they say, you know, "What do you do in healthcare?" And we'd put together this amazing schedule of all this fantastic research that's going on in campus. And folks would walk away going really impressed to say that, wow, there's a bunch of incredibly smart, innovative people working at Georgia Tech, and I'm just overwhelmed by everything that's going on here. In fact, maybe a little too overwhelmed. And part of what we want to do now, working with the faculty and working with the research leaders and working with our partners, is to say, not only do we have a great inventory of research, not only do we have a terrific talent base, but how do we anticipate all of these pieces falling together in place to make major changes in how healthcare works in this country and others, to make major changes in the future of commercial media systems, to make major changes in the way that communities respond to both disasters as well as the daily care and support of their community members? And so this is one shot at that, where we've been able to go on the road and say, if you want to talk about changing the delivery of healthcare, you're going to have to do things like changing ubiquitous healthcare opportunities and empowering patients. You're going to have to make changes in data analytics. You're going to have to deploy new models and simulation capabilities, and you're going to have to work with the here and now of interoperable HIT systems. And it's no longer just an inventory, but it's actually a collective approach. So these are baby steps, but they're important first steps for us to be able to say, Georgia Tech, not only do we do great work, but we think collectively this work can make a difference in substantial ways. It likes that picture so much, it's not changing. One of the other ways that we support cross-campus conversations is our annual People and Technology Forum. So this is some images from the recent one in November 2013. And this is one of our major events where we bring outside partners in, industry groups, our alumni, folks who are interested in Georgia Tech's leadership in these spaces. It started as the Future Media Fest, so it has a media orientation, but we connect to a number of the areas within iPad's portfolio. The issue is fantastic. Many of you will recognize Babak Pravis talking about Google Glass. You'll also hear more about the FIDO project. That's Professor Melody Jackson-Moore. But what we were able to accomplish in this year's conversation was to push forward our agenda and our interest in a number of areas. In this case, wearable computing, Internet of Things, and software-defined networking. And you're going to see these themes picked up in our breakout groups. So it's a way for us to pull together and say, this is what Georgia Tech's doing. This is what industry cares about. This is a way for us to stimulate some interesting conversations. And the exciting thing for us is not only was it a good event, people learned, people talked, people connected, but we were able to push forward our agendas, our funding, our partnerships, the ways that we are connecting with the outside world on these topics in substantial ways. So events are great because they're events, but events are wonderful when they push forward your agenda. All right, I'm going to have to give up on the clicker. One of the other things that we do is we like to find opportunities to seed innovative research. So I want to talk to you about three programs that are longstanding enough that I'm able to say you can count on them happening this year. So for all of those looking for funding, occasionally looking for funding, okay. For those of you looking for funding, these are examples of programs that you can anticipate. And then what we also try to do is work with partners and other organizations to provide seed funding in other avenues as well. So for example, this year as in past years, iPad partners with the Gvu Center to fund a broad-based research program. So these are the awardees for this fiscal year. Everything from a new game studio to Carrie and Russ's work with One Bus Away, new ways of pulling people together, such as the computational social science workshops and the Games at Georgia Tech endeavors, new performances, such as the work by Sonic Generator, and also kickstarting some new research activities, the FIDO project, wearable computing for dogs. Never knew we were going to do that, an amazing project. And then some of the work that Karen and others are doing in simulation. So this is a program that you can go out and find out about past seed grant awardees, look at examples of what folks have been doing, and anticipate applying for that in the upcoming year. Two other examples is our partnerships with both Children's Healthcare and with the CDC. This past year, we were able to partner also within the CORF, which is the Outcomes Research Center within Children's Healthcare, and able to fund a number of initial research programs. And these are examples of this. So luckily, many of you are not crazy, taking notes. The slides will be available, but these are, again, examples of research projects that you can look at and then see about ideas for future research programs. The same thing with the CDC as well. So what you can anticipate, this year, I say April deadline. I actually think right now it's set for April 1st. So not quite sure about the humor of having an April 1st deadline, but we have an April 1 deadline for the Children's Healthcare Program. And again, we anticipate funding about six grants at a 50K level each, approximately, within that program, so you can anticipate that. And one of the breakout groups is on our research partnerships in pediatric healthcare, so this is a great chance to find out about that. The May deadline, probably around May 19th, is our ongoing partnership with Keith Edwards, Director of the Gvu Center. And there's, it's a wide range of topics, so pretty much anything within iPad's portfolio is probably within that portfolio as well. We can give you examples of that. The CDC, the good news is, is that last year, when it all came and push and shove and economic craziness and all of this, we only were able to fund one grant. So it was a lot of work for one lucky set of researchers that got funding. This year, we anticipate having a summer deadline for fall review, so this time next year, we will be some, hopefully, six sets of researchers, so six grants will be funded under this program, and it will be Georgia Tech-wide. So it will be interests that are related to iPad, but really interests across the entire campus. So really excited about the fact that we did a lot of hard work to get one research program funded this year, but that hard work generated energy and excitement, which actually included President Peterson and Fredin, the Director of the CDC, getting together and saying that they wanted to expand that relationship. So these are deadlines that you can count on. And as I said, what we also try to do with seed grants is, sometimes our industry partners, what they'll say is they'll come to Georgia Tech and say, well, we're not quite sure what we want to fund, but we'd like to do a call for proposals. And so you'll get announcements from us that say, you know, you've got 30 days, 60 days to respond, but here's a new company coming to campus, and they want to see the breadth of ideas that are available as well. And we support those, we just can't predict when they're going to happen. So that was transdisciplinary, and the way we support multidisciplinary and interdisciplinary teaming. With our translational approach, what we focus on is really, one of my favorite quotes, but then pushing it even further, which is, "The best way to predict the future is to invent it." So that's attributed to Alan Kaye. And I like to push that even further, not only just to invent it, but to experience it. So the way we think about translational impact is creating living laboratories that allow our researchers to come together in a shared set of place and resources and subjects and people and technology to create a virtuous cycle where you're not only inventing cutting-edge research, but you're learning from how people experience that research, day in and day out, and that hopefully, throughout that process, you're also improving, you know, the traditional pipeline or the way that technology moves out into real-world settings, because they already are in some version of a real-world setting. So Matt Sanders, who's the head of our Living Lab program, has been extremely busy in the past two and a half years, because half of the laboratories that are on this slide didn't even exist when we started. But we've been able to pull together an incredible set of resources available to the Georgia Tech faculty. Some of them have come from faculty having a vision and just saying, you know, "How can you help us?" You know, even if you're just helping in the margins, "How can you help us make this happen?", such as Craig Zimmering's Centigrade Lab, or the Home Lab, which has come out of GTRI. Some of these things have been raw inventions and just a sheer matter of will to make them happen. Many of the things that we're doing about making the campus a living laboratory, partnering with Arnoch and others, so the GT Journey Experience and GT Mob and Midtown Buzz have all come out of that determination to say that if we want to invent technologies in the space, we want to create an environment where people can experiment in novel and exciting ways. So one of the things that you'll be able to do during the breakout groups that we have today is to come here about some of those new capabilities. And in particular, we're very excited about the long and hard work that we've put together in place to support protected healthcare data. There are many advantages to Georgia Tech not having a medical school. When we're doing healthcare research, we're not bound by a particular approach or processes or technology, but it also doesn't, it also means that we don't have the standard infrastructure in place in terms of doing clinical work and working with clinical data. So, and something that I naively thought would take weeks, took a year, but that was my naivete, we are able to support researchers working with very sensitive data sets in ways where you don't go to jail and we don't end up being a subject of a Richard Belcher expose about Georgia Tech. So come here about those capabilities as well. One of the other ways that we engage the idea of a living laboratory at Georgia Tech is our annual convergence innovation competition. This is another partnership with Arnoch, iPad, Gvu, many, many people coming together to provide an amazing experience for our Georgia Tech students. Each year, this competition is hosted by a number of industry partners. So this year, we're starting with, we at least are working with AT&amp;T, Cisco, Code42, and GM, around a number of categories or themes where they're looking for both technical innovation, but also looking for the students to grapple with what it means for it to be a sustainable innovation. So that can be from the notion of a traditional business plan, or it could be just from the notion of how would you keep this type of innovation going after its initial launch. The students have access to these cutting-edge living laboratories and the resources that we have available on campus. They have access to the industry expertise, and we have ways that they engage with each other, and it's really up to industry to see how much they want to be able to work with us. And then they come together through a number of, well, including something called Hackfest, number of opportunities where we support their efforts, and they are able to compete with each other. Lots of fantastic stories about this competition. Hundreds of students are now engaged in this every single year. We're Georgia Tech, so we double and triple word score everything. So we make sure that we, you know, connect project opportunities and classes and master's theses and anything that they're already, you know, that they're already passionate about, how can we connect that into the competition? But probably most important for the students is we work hard to have them connect in with interdisciplinary teams. So it's not just a bunch of folks from ECE or a bunch of folks in computing, but they're also working with design and psychology and sciences and management and business to pull together some amazing contenders within this. So one of the things, one of the breakout sessions is actually going to be the breakout session that's in here following my yammering on, is going to be a discussion of student opportunities, and CIC is one of the amazing opportunities available for them. So in the last part is about this question of, well, then how do you put all of these pieces together so that it actually makes a difference outside in the world? And as you can imagine, that's a hard goal to meet. That's a high bar for us to set. But what are the different ways that we can make sure our leadership is actually transformational, that it's making a difference out in the world? One of the ways that we do this, it's not the only way, but it's, sure. It's supposed to be a much larger group of companies. This is a slide I don't understand. Okay, Ed, your job just got a lot easier. We just eliminated it. I think they paid extra money to get the other folks deleted. Okay. That slide has about 40 companies on it, but is to work with a significant network of partners, whether it be for-profit companies, non-for-profit companies, the companies that pay extra money so that they stay on the slide, to work without, work within that network. And one of the breakout sessions, again, immediately following this one, is to talk to Ed, talk to Lori Barrett and other folks who, day in and day out, work with the challenge of how do we, how do we partner with these companies productively? You know, the big ones with deep pockets that can fund a lot of research. We can imagine how we want to partner with them. We want them to fund the great research that we're doing. But we also want to partner with the lean startup teams, and we want to partner with the government groups. We want to partner with the foundations. We want to work within the ecosystem of the players that are going to make a difference in terms of the overall leadership within the setting. So come and talk to Ed and find out about all the other companies that are on this slide in terms of the partnerships that we have. The last part that I want to mention on transformational leadership, and this is really aspirational because we haven't gotten there yet, which is how do we, again, take not just an inventory of the great research we're doing, not just a systems approach to what are all the pieces, but how are we able to articulate our work in terms of significant grand challenges? And if someone asks the question, what are the major grand challenges that Georgia Tech is trying to solve? What are the, you know, the big, crazy aspirational goals for Georgia Tech? What would that answer be, and what would that answer be for our space? So much of what you've heard us talk about in terms of discovery, application, deployment, all the pieces that we're working together, this is the, these are the ingredients of what iPad is about. This is what we're trying, we're trying to create an ecosystem that would let us do this. But nevertheless, there's still the hard work to be done amongst our researchers, which is to say, okay, if we have all of these pieces together, if we can't put this together, how do we articulate this in terms of the massive challenges that our society is struggling with and where Georgia Tech can make a difference? So in the few minutes that I have left before we go into the breakout groups, I wanted to share with you some of the exciting highlights of things that have happened in the past year. And these are also some previews for the things that you're going to hear about in the breakout groups. And again, I'll close with the actual breakout groups and instructions on where to go next. I mentioned living laboratories, and sometimes they're being sheer act of will. I think this is an example of that. It was kind of obvious that Georgia Tech and us here in Tech Square and Synergy and TSRB should be partnering with our Midtown community, because we're essentially in their backyard. This is one, you know, one large community and one large neighborhood. But there was the question of how do we bring together their interests in terms of what Midtown wants to be in terms of a live, work, play community, in terms of existing on a cutting-edge technology, but to meet societal, community needs, and what Georgia Tech can bring to the picture? So after many, many meetings and trying to get the language right, and us, me talking about living laboratories, and they're, they're just looking at me like, what is she, what is she trying to say? We've been able to create an initial partnership to say, okay, there are ways that we can work together where we're able to connect Georgia Tech with the business interest and the community interest and the residents and the stakeholders to explore experimental and innovative approaches that involve technology. So one of the breakout groups, again, that is available to you this afternoon is to hear about our engagements with community, and it also includes Westside and the City of Atlanta and others. But the newest for us has been our partnership with Midtown. It's very exciting, very challenging, but it's starting to click in terms of how we're able to now take someone at Georgia Tech that has some crazy ideas and connect them with stakeholders in Midtown, and how to connect folks within Midtown who are now saying, ooh, wow, you know, Georgia Tech isn't just a great institution that's in our backyard, but we can imagine working with them day in and day out about the problems that we care about. Another living laboratory, which was a sheer force of will, was actually the next generation of turning Georgia Tech itself into a living laboratory, and this is the GT Journey Program. So we've just finished our second fall of the GT Journey being a version of the convergence innovation competition, but in this case, instead of working with industry, around industry interests, we're working with Georgia Tech around Georgia Tech interests. So funded by President Peterson as part of the strategic plan, this, again, has involved multidisciplinary teams of students working across campus to come up with apps and services and approaches to meet what they see are the needs at Georgia Tech. I know I should remember some of the more recent ones, but I love the first year's work of one. Everything from, what's the app that shows you the best seat for any classroom, kind of a seat recommendation system? And of course, the students get to decide on the criteria for that. So best Wi-Fi, this professor can't see you, most hot, most cold, ways of connecting with different resources across campus. One of the ones that I saw recently this past year was everything from how roommates could coordinate with each other around chores and responsibilities, but then they were taking that further to how do you create volunteer groups and how do you engage people in terms of them, they're coming around, shared interests as well. So again, a terrific educational and research and experiential opportunity for our students. And the good thing about the support for the living lab is we're able to then take the best ideas that win in the competition and then harden those apps and services so that they're not so fragile, and then make them available to the rest of the community. Another project that I like to brag about, and but I'm sort of, I tend to be a little shy on this one, because I'm actually working on this project, but it's so much fun that I couldn't resist putting this up here, has been what we call the Rome Project. The Rome Project is, I think, one of the fantastic examples of what happens when you can actually connect all of these very different pieces of Georgia Tech and their expertise under one project team working together. And in this case, the project team was faced with the challenge of what if people treating, in this case, BRAS cancer for patients in the Rome, Georgia area, they wanted to collaborate together to be able to use the latest in terms of health, health information exchange in EHR technologies, but then they also wanted those systems to be patient-facing and to be able to engage patients. So what this meant for us to really do work in this area is that we've had expertise from the Enterprise Innovation Institute next door, and their health IT group, and I3O, who are working on, you know, the bleeding edge of today around these systems and how do you engage physicians and practices? And they have the credibility within the state to be able to engage these groups. We've been able to work with folks in GTRI, my young is here, who are working on the next generation of these large systems. And part of this has been a substantial relationship with Microsoft Health Vault and where they're going with that system. And then we've had an academic research group, and I've been able to be part of that, which has been able to look at the design and evaluation of the patient experiences. This kind of research isn't possible unless you do the hard work so that these, these groups can coordinate and work with each other across three different financial systems, more than about five different reward and incentive systems, and all sorts of vocabulary in terms of what these folks actually want to achieve. But when we do that, we're now making a significant difference, which is recognized in Rome, it's recognized by Microsoft, and it's now being recognized nationally. So it's these kinds of ingredients that we want to put together. Lots of other highlights in the health space. I think Mark Bronstein isn't here yet, but he will be here, both his MOOC around health IT and his new textbooks. He's now like the rock star of health IT, which is kind of a scary thought, if you know Mark. But he goes to hymns, and people come out of the woodwork, and it's like, I've been in your MOOC, and, you know, I've been in the health industry, but I needed to find out about health information technology, so I've been taking your MOOC, and this has been fantastic. So looking at both kind of what Georgia Tech can do in terms of education delivery, and then bringing that together to what we want to accomplish in terms of our leadership within that space. A number of folks are here from the RARC team, building on many years of research and collaboration. This team just won a almost $5 million, I rounded up, I'm sure you like that, almost $5 million national center on looking at aging with disability. Just tremendous competition in terms of how they pulled this proposal together. And I almost felt sorry for the review team when they came down for the site visit, because there's these two reviewers, and they were surrounded by deans and school chairs, and Monique was there, and it was just, it was this, we are so committed to this research and what we want to accomplish at Georgia Tech. I'm not really sure the review team had any choice at that point in time, but they, they put the team through the paces. Very, very exciting. I already mentioned our partnership with children's, and you can come to the breakout group to hear more about that. Finally, I mentioned our People and Technology Forum, but it's just been very exciting to watch the energy around those themes and what's happening in campus, and again, how do we stitch these pieces together at Georgia Tech? So hopefully, everyone knows the crazy guy in the upper right. That's Thad Starnar, Technical Lead, Designer on Google Glass, also one of our faculty members. I can't imagine how many, how many emails he doesn't answer a day on, you know, I've heard about Google Glass, and I want to know what it means for my industry. So Georgia Tech and Mary Beth and IMTC pulled that together and say, okay, well, we're going to create a new research partnership program, so all that has to do is say, okay, you care about Google Glass, here, go talk to this now cadre of researchers at Georgia Tech who can help you answer those questions. So we're able to connect with Thad's expertise, connect with our program at Google, and then increase the leadership and increase the ways that Georgia Tech is responding to many, many needs locally and beyond. Somehow, that also included wearable technologies for dogs. Never would have seen that coming, but that's what's hap- Never would have seen that coming, but that's what happens when you put Melody and Thad in the same laboratory. And they're still looking for displays that are slobber resistant, which I never knew was a criteria, but amazing work. And if you haven't heard or seen about this research, you've got to find it out, but incredible appeal and societal impact with that. And then also what we did at the forum was launch with GTRI the C date. I'm going to start learning how to say it correctly. The Center for the Development and Application of the Internet of Things. I'm an old UBCOMP person, so I'm still wrapping my head around Internet of Things, but if you didn't pay attention to, like, what was the major Cisco ad at CES this past week, and Qualcomm, and so much attention and interest coming to the next generation of these technologies. It's very, very exciting. GTRI is taking the lead on that, but again, pulling together these opportunities at Georgia Tech for the rest of the campus. So in closing, the slides will be available, so you can check out these dates, but there's lots of great things happening throughout the spring semester. There's going to be a number of workshops and hackathons and opportunities to work with Midtown Alliance and the rest of the Midtown community. So we have one in January 30th. That's a developer workshop, kind of looking at a broad base of ideas and appeal. And then we're going to have what we're calling a Midtown Storytelling Hackathon in early February. We're going to get together with a bunch of folks Friday night, and it's like, what kind of story would you want people to experience about Midtown? It can be the history of the Fox, it can be how I met my significant other, and these are our favorite restaurants in Midtown. It can be local art. It can be anything that you want to in terms of how should people experience and understand Midtown. You go out and work in Midtown for the weekend, and then you come back Sunday night to show how your innovations and your approach has helped tell the story of this tremendous community. I mentioned CIC. There's a number of opportunities for how the students are going to engage industry, how our students are not going to the beach during spring break, but they're actually spending their time on the third floor with the CIC Hackathon as they're continuing to build their competition entries, which are going to be due in early April. I mentioned the children's proposals, the GBU proposals, just many, many opportunities for our community to continue to gauge across this campus. So, almost on time, actually since that clock is fast, perfectly on time, I want to tell you about the breakout groups and the opportunities you have available for the rest of the afternoon. The first set of breakout groups, which are starting at 2:00, are intended to give folks a little more informational, a little bit of like what's going on and how do I take advantage of these opportunities? So staying in here, because we've got a number of students registered, will be opportunities for students. So you're going to hear more about CIC, you're going to hear about working with Midtown, you're going to hear about working with different communities, you're going to hear about this cool senior design class called Computing for Good. And I think I'm forgetting some of those, as well as if you're just either teaching a project course or taking a project course, and you just want to find cool ideas and resources for your class projects. This is also relevant for you. There is a group that I'm going to lead with Lee, Lee McCook, IPAT's Deputy Director from GTRI. This is pretty much IPAT Faculty 101. So this is great for new faculty or for folks who haven't talked with us before, is about what does it mean to be an IPAT faculty member because I'm a faculty member in the College of Engineering, or I'm in this laboratory in GTRI? It's like, no, no, you're not leaving those homes, but IPAT is about creating a network. So what does it mean for you to work within that network? So we look forward, hopefully, seeing some new faculty faces in that. Industry partnerships. Ed, Lori are going to talk to you about all those companies that didn't show up on that slide, and they want to talk to you about what companies we're working with, what companies have been on your radar, but you don't have kind of the time or the connections, or not sure how to approach them. And I think most interesting is to talk about that despite that it may be nice to get funding from companies, and we like to do that, that there's also many, many other ways for you to think about what it means to partner with industry. And they will take you through some of the examples of what that looks like. And then finally, I mentioned Matt and Mark Bronstein, the rock star, and then Sherry Fruja, another rock star, and Brian Jones, rock star of Aware Home. We've got lots of rock stars in this session. Are going to talk to you about our Infrastructure for Health IT. Some of these are laboratories that are continuing to evolve and change, just as the Aware Home. Some of these are laboratory resources that are very, very new. In fact, I think the protected data became online literally during the holidays. So very, very new capability. So if you're interested in working in the Health IT space, you really want to come find out about those resources. So we're going to do that. The locations are there, and they're also on handouts, and there'll be plenty of people to steer you to the right direction. The next set of breakout groups are aimed to look at emerging research programs, new collaborations, new things that are kickstarting across campus. So I mentioned Midtown, Westside, City of Atlanta, lots of different ways that we're working with the local communities in the Atlanta area. So if you're interested in that, that's the Community Engagement Workshop. So that's myself, Ellen, who is over here, Ellen Zegura, Mary Beth Gandy, Lori Barrett again, We're Stealing Chris Ladantic from the DM faculty retreat. We're going to be able to talk to you about that. We'll be over in 1:32. There is a new program that is informally or formally called a STEM Incubator, and it's an interest in the state of Georgia in terms of how they want to engage Georgia Tech around innovations and STEM education. So this isn't trying to be everything STEM, because I can't imagine what that would look like in a breakout group, but it's around this particular opportunity. And Donna, who I saw coming in, Donna Llewellyn, and Lee McCook are going to be guiding that conversation and catching you up. This has been a pretty recent conversation on the Georgia Tech campus. So if you're interested in STEM, you want to check that out. I mentioned the fantastic team who got the Aging with Disability, RARC. They are a subset of a larger task force on campus that has looked at issues such as the Aging Task Force and the Disability Task Force and the Aging with Disability or Without Disability, all sorts of issues within that space. It pulls together computing and design and psychology and a number of other discipline and capabilities. So that's Dennis, I know, yep, okay. So Dennis Folds, Brian Jones, Ed Price, Wendy Rogers, and John Sanford are going to be able to catch you up to date with what that task force is about, what their aspirations are in terms of what they're going to do next on campus, and I'm sure will be glad to answer questions about the RARC. I mentioned C date. C date, C date? Am I getting it right? C date? Internet of Things. I can get everything but the name. Jeff Evans is going to be leading that discussion, Trina Brennan, and then I know that Richard Fujimoto and Margaret Loper are also going to be coming in. So this is, again, very new. We've just have launched this. We want to look at the ways of connecting across campus, and in particular, the phrase that I like is this notion of the human edge of the Internet of Things. So looking at Internet of Things, but looking at it through the lens of security and privacy and human practices. And then finally, I've talked a bunch about our work with pediatric healthcare and children's research. So Mark Bronstein, Sherry Fruja, Leanne West, right there, are going to be able to talk to you about that. So they'll, they can answer questions about the seed grants and the research capabilities and the partnerships, and anybody who is working near that space and wants to move into pediatric research, that's a set of opportunities as well. Of course, we will conclude with a networking reception, so everybody can come back together and compare notes and check within with each other and continue to say Happy New Year and meet new faces. We'll do that at 4:00 and look forward again to the discussions throughout the rest of the afternoon. So these are your opportunities for the first four breakout groups. Thank you very much, and I look forward to our continued discussions.